All right, let's get started. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning, everyone. It's Monday, February 17th. Welcome to the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners' work session. Just Commissioner Cook and I today, and then, of course, our county councillor Rich Eckert down there. Good morning to you guys. First item on the agenda is an update from our audit finance department. And so Jennifer, take it away.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Sauer, financial administrator. Oops, I'm sorry. I'll just start off by reminding everyone that this is just a preliminary end-of-year update on our financial overview. Shawnee County is open for revenues and expenses. We have a 60-day period that we still are able to recognize revenues and expenses for the prior year. So we're still posting some of those entries, and our year-end entries have not yet been posted. So with that said, this is the majority of where we stand at the end of last year. Looking first at our revenues, our 2024 revenues are sitting at $144 million. Our budgeted amount was $139,300,000. So we did end our year with more revenues than what we had initially budgeted for. And in comparison to 2023's revenue, you can see that that is up from the prior year. That is, and we'll get into what areas came in above budget specifically. Our property taxes is not one of them. So our property taxes came in just about exactly where we budgeted them. Couldn't be much closer than that in the property tax world. So $106,256,000 in 2024 revenues came in of the budgeted amount of $106,400,000. So everything came in exactly as we expected it in the property tax world. Our other taxes, again, they came in just a little under. The majority of that is a timing for city-county highway that will rectify itself in January. We made that payment in January this year instead of in October. So that should fix itself, because that was about $180,000. And that is exactly what we're short in our budget for 2024. So that revenue is just a timing. Once we do our end-of-year entries, that will fix itself as well. Our charges for services came in just a little bit above budget. We budgeted for $6.3 million in services and fees, and we recognized $6.6 million in revenues. So our charges for services, and this is predominantly in the planning section, in parks and rec fees, and health department fees. Those are our three main areas that would be included in this. So that leaves the other revenues, which is where we are seeing the majority of our revenues above budget. So we budgeted for $10,300,000 roughly in other revenues, and we recognized $14,600,000 in other revenues. So it's in our other revenue section, which is exactly what it says. It's everything else. So in looking at this, the majority of what this money came in above budget was in interest for our bank account. So we budgeted that. We were expecting the interest rates to bottom out a little faster than they actually did start reducing. So that was able to help us in our budget for 2024. Again, this is a little skewed. Our property taxes are higher than 74%, but without our end-of-year adjustments, this is looking a little low. That will end up at about 84% that our budget is predominantly property taxes. On the expenditure side, our expenditures came in very close to what we had budgeted. Our budget was $139,500,000, and we expended $138,604,000. Sorry, I lost a million as I was saying that out loud. But yeah, so it was pretty much across the board on where we stand budget-wise. You'll see our budget was higher than the prior year. Majority of those increases are in our salaries and benefits for our employees. That is a normal area for us to have increases from one year to the next. Our law enforcement was budgeted at $71,350,000, and we spent $71,280,000. So this came in just a touch under budget. One thing I want to remind you of is that towards the end of the year, knowing that our revenues were looking in such healthy conditions, our departments did make a lot of requests at the end of the year to transfer money into projects so that that can help alleviate some expenditures in 2025 that they haven't been able to get started yet. So that's why many of these are going to look very close to budget. Our Parks and Recreation and Stormontville Event Center was budgeted at $20,616,000, and that is exactly what they are spending. Again, this is because everything in that section ended up either paying out or is transferring into projects for the following year. Our Public Works was budgeted at $13,930,000, and expenditures of $13,830,000 were spent. Our Public Health had expenditure, our budget of $9,321,000 and expenditures of $9,318,000. You know their end-of-year transfer was specifically to prepare for a software migration that they're probably looking at needing to get started in '25. Administrative expenses, budget of $16,824,000 with expenditures of $16,350,000. And debt service was a budget and expenditures of $7,524,000. By category, this just, I have a couple charts that just show the majority of our expenditures do fall in the law enforcement category. That is, that includes the sheriff's department, the DOC, community corrections, the DA's office, the courts. All of those fall in the law enforcement area. And this is just a pie chart if you like to look at pies more than you like to look at bars. So that's all I have for the budget, but I did want to touch base real quick on debt service. As I mentioned, our debt service did spend at the exact same level that we had planned on it, that we had budgeted for it. So I just wanted to give you the projection for our upcoming debt service. These are, short of issuing new debt, these are pretty easy for us to budget and expend because they pay out based on schedules. So we do have about $400,000 of debt falling off in 2025, '228 and '26. And then we have a couple years that we have over a million dollars falling off in '27 and '28. So this is our current debt service schedule. So this is where we stand from a debt perspective. So that is all for my financial overview presentation. Did you guys have any questions or anything that you wanted me to dive into further?
So I do. On the debt service... So this is only '24 looking forward, but on your financial overview, it's also worth noting that we had quite a bit roll-off last year.
Yes, we had about $900,000.
Yeah, so we did cut our, despite issuing the bonds for the jail and for parks and rec, we did have quite a bit of debt service, like we had a net negative on that, right?
Yes, yes. We did not, we issued the debt for the jail and parks and rec facilities in 2022. So those first payments came out in 2023.
Right. So, and do you have any idea like which debt is rolling off? I mean, I know this is half a million dollars. I assume that was issued like 10, 20 years ago.
Yeah, majority of our debt is 20-year. I don't have that in front of me right now. I can get that for you, though. We have a schedule that shows all of that.
Okay. It might be worth looking at, just more out of curiosity than anything else, I guess. But so let's say a half a million dollars of debt service is what's going to roll off next year.
I'm fairly certain that's, I'm guessing, but I think a piece of that is a large group of special assessments, GO bonds, that were put in place, just because I know we have some specials that are getting ready to come off of many properties.
Okay. So do you know like approximately what our total bonded indebtedness is? Like this seven and a half million dollars of debt service, what it accumulates to on a...
I don't have that in front of me. If you can pull up our debt schedule, that would show it. Oh, you don't have your computer? I can get it for you.
You can get that for me, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, that's it for me. Do you have any questions?
Now, Jennifer, this is still, I know that there's some things that are still coming into your office, so this is not a final, final tally for the end of the year.
Correct.
You would anticipate that when?
We will have a, we won't have our final, final until our financials are finished, and that isn't going to be until July, June, July. But we will have all of our revenues and expenses. We'll start making those entries in March. So we will have, our audit starts mid-April. So prior to that time, about two weeks before that time, we usually have a pretty good trial balance and draft of our financials at that point. So about another six weeks out.
All right. That's all I have.
A busy six weeks. I do have one other presentation for you before we break into HR's area. We are finally to the point where our ARPA SLFRF fund projects are predominantly complete. We have one active project still remaining, which is our courthouse renovation. We also have three administrative projects that are still open, and they will have to be open until we are both finished with spending the last of our ARPA money as well as close out the accounting for it, because the administrative functions have to do with accounting and reporting and paying for bank fees. So as we get into this, I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about what we spent our money for at Shawnee County. We had a total award amount of $34,355,895,000. The vast majority of that money, as you can see, was spent on county CIP projects. So the, this was a decision that was made by both Spark Committee and the Commissioners. It allowed us to utilize these one-time funds to get several large-dollar projects off of our CIP list without having to use property tax dollars to achieve these long-lasting improvements. So that was part of the philosophy that Shawnee County decided to use in utilizing their CIP, or their ARPA SLFRF money. Little deeper dive into those capital improvement projects. Shawnee County did several county building renovations. That includes the courthouse, our administrative building that we are in today, and the detention center. Our focus was not on making it look pretty, but on making sure that we focused on improvements that would help reduce costs over several years. That includes HVAC lighting and windows for the courthouse. We did have to expand to add two additional courtrooms in the courthouse. And we also were able to add a jury assembly room, which was a much-needed new addition to the courthouse. If any of you have done jury duty any time over the last several years, you know that that involved you standing in a hallway with many strangers and while you were waiting your turn at the window. So we now have a room where people can congregate in that room, and it gives them a place to go back to throughout the day, I believe, whenever they're there. So it was a much-needed improvement. We also were able to finally finish all of the courtroom refresh projects. That has been a request every year since I've ever been here, to add another couple courtrooms and get them refreshed with audiovisual updates. We also updated all of the gallery seating and podiums in all of our courtrooms. This also allowed there to be consistency among each of the courtrooms for the audiovisual. So if there's ever a need for judges or courts to change to another location, they're able to do so with less heartburn. The last thing we did in the courthouse from a building renovation standpoint is updating our security equipment. So if you have been into our courthouse over the last couple weeks, you have noticed there's a new configuration for entering the courthouse that was able to increase security and efficiency for the sheriff's office and our security folks to make sure that everybody who comes and into our courthouse is in a safer environment. The detention center, we focused on roofing replacement, a boiler replacement, and, oh, it's not on here, sorry, annex HVAC replacement, and fire alarm system replacement, sorry. But that's what we did at the detention center for parks and rec. We did a Lake Shawnee campground renovation. We were able to replace the mini train, which gave us some efficiencies in the daily running of the mini train. I know it has been much more reliable than the train that we used to have, even though everyone loves the old train. I am aware of that. But even my short legs appreciate the new mini train, so. Turf replacement at Pony Field was funded with ARPA SLFRF money as well as updates to various other parks and playgrounds throughout the city and county. Public safety, we wanted to focus on public safety. It's important for both our community and our public safety workers. We were able to do some Sheriff's Training Center complex upgrades. The purchase of the law enforcement building, we purchased a DOC detainee body scanner, which improves the ability to scan people as they're being brought into the DOC. Emergency management procured a used mobile communications vehicle. We were able to start the nurse navigation program. And then the sheriff's department had some various equipment updates that they were able to fund. IT, we were able to fund remote worker technology. The remote worker technology is something that we used just even a couple weeks ago with our snow days that we had to take. That allows us to still have employees at home working even when we can't be open to the public. So we're still able to get some of the work done that we do behind the scenes. IT upgrades, normally, all of these IT upgrades normally would have been funded with tax dollars. And in the public, I guess the other one was we funded a courts data center upgrade, which was a request for the CIP from the courts a couple years ago. Public safety, we added digital marquee signs. We procured some UVGI units and HEPA filtration fans at our health department and our clinic. And the election polling place sanitation and cleaning for the last two elections have been funded with ARPA money. Lastly, we were able to purchase a facilities UTV. So these public health improvements have helped us provide better public health for the community we serve. Other than the, and as I said earlier, that was 80.9% of the money we spent were on those three slides that I just went through. We also had some other expenses. We had some public safety premium pay that we were able to fund with ARPA funding. The district attorney's office was able to fund some legal assistance that he needed in order to help clear the court backlog that was required by state statute. We had additional allocation for mental health services. We, the last two items that are listed there, I wanted to point out, that is for governmental services and administrative costs, but we were able to keep the money that we spent on those two items under 2% for the overall spend of our ARPA money. So I think we did, we, the committee, did a really good job of spending money across the board on items that would not only be a one-time purchase, but that would also continue to pay back for several years. That was one of the things that was looked at. I want to take a minute, if I could, to just thank all the people that were on the Spark Committee. I didn't, I forgot to bring my list with me. But we had Commissioner Rippon, who's not here today. We had Betty Greiner, who served as the Director of Administrative Services. And then I sat on the committee at the very end as the financial administrator. Jim Crowell and Rich Eckert sat as the county councillor. Larry Moss sat as our county treasurer. Our county clerk, Cindy Beck, was also on the committee. We had Brian Cole, the director of the detention facility. We had Scott Garcia, the deputy director of emergency management. Teresa Fisher as our director of the health department. Pat O'Blander and Mark Price as our director of IT. Thank you, I just like, I forgot one. So all of those people were voting members. Then we also had some staff that attended fairly regularly. Jody Thadonny sat in, Nelson Castile sat in. And then non-voting, who were able to keep track of everything, like just now, and keep the accounting and the record-keeping straight, was Andrea Forbes and Karuva Kaseke up in our accounting department. And they will continue to do that for probably another year, a year, year and a half, as we close out the last of the money and make sure that we're fully prepared for any type of an audit should it come. So I just wanted to thank all of those people. It was a lot of time, a lot of, additionally, let me also say, I just glanced back and saw a couple of them. Additionally, when we reached out originally to all of our department heads, they had to pull together what the needs were for each of their departments. They put all that together for us, and they have done a good job of making sure that we are following all of the rules and requirements of this funding as we're going through it. Because it was a large spend, and we had to do things in a very different way than Shawnee County normally does things. So I just wanted to take a minute to say thanks for all of that, and we are grateful for the money, but we are also grateful that we are almost done spending the money. Did you have any questions?
No, but just a comment, I appreciate everybody's hard work on that. I know it was kind of a crazy time, right? Like the last couple of years have been a little wild, and you know, from my involvement with the Association of Counties, I've heard a lot of horror stories from other counties. I've seen governments that did not put that funding to good use and either had to return some of it because they didn't use it properly, or had some big controversy, or they created expenditures that lasted, that outlasted the money, and then they put themselves in a budgetary bind down the road because there's an expectation that they continue those expenses. And so I think that the committee did a great job in making sure that the money we spent is just spent one time. And you know, I think the courthouse project in particular was something that was very, very needed. I mean, as we've gone through that project, we've seen just how bad it needed the work over there. And I think it was approximately $15 million that we're spending on that project. When you look at other counties that have built new courthouses, I know Fannie County right now is attempting to get a sales tax to fund a new courthouse. Jail projects upwards of, I mean, it's like $70 to $80 million, I think is what they're looking at. Johnson County just built a new courthouse a few years ago. It was in the hundreds of millions. I mean, this $15 million is probably going to get us another 20 years at least out of this courthouse, and it's modernized to a point that it's still going to be functional for that time. And we're not going to have to replace the HVAC system or renovate any courtrooms in that time either. And so the long-term effects on the county are going to be positive. And so I think it was a good job done by the committee.
Yes, and as you were talking, I guess I also want to just thank all of the employees who worked in the courthouse over the last couple of years. It has not been a, we decided to do that construction in place, which caused many headaches for all people involved. So I do want to say a thank you to the employees who sat with cold offices in the winter and hot offices in the summer, and we appreciate you.
Yeah, yeah, it was a struggle for sure, especially when the air conditioner was out and the heat of the summer last year.
And heat, not lack of heat in the winter, so our employees have endured quite a bit.
Yes.
Hopefully, they'll be much more comfortable for years to come.
That's the goal.
So, all right.
That's all I have.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Angela Lewis.
Good morning, Commissioners. Angela Lewis, Director of Administrative Services. All right, so I'm going to talk to you about our open positions and give you a hiring update. We currently have 1,016 full-time permanent employees, 27 part-time employees, and 513 seasonal intermittent employees. That's a total of 1,556 employees as of February 1st, which is a little bit above what we had last year at this time, which was 1,340 employees in February of 2024. I'm going to talk to you about the top five employees, well, departments with an increase in employees, and then explain why we have that increase. Parks and Recreation has additional 152 employees over this time last year. Elections has an additional 18. The Sheriff's Office has an additional 15. Corrections has 13, and Solid Waste has 10. And all of these are good increases. For Parks and Recreation, the increase in employees count year over year is due to retaining more of the intermittent and seasonal employees from '24 to 2025. That doesn't mean that they were paid every week. It just means that they weren't terminated at the end of the season, they were deactivated, and they'll be returning. That will make our parks hiring a little bit easier for this year. I want to go back to the next slide real quickly. There we go. In Elections, the additional 18 are again seasonal employees. We just came off of an election year, so there was an increase, but it will slowly go down if people are deactivated. The Sheriff's Office has an additional 15, and this is great news for the Sheriff's Office. Captains Akery, Wanamaker, and Harmon have done a wonderful job hiring for the dispatch center. We're at a point where those positions are now paused in dispatch because we have people hired. Now, we can't get too crazy excited yet that all those yet that all those people are on the floor, because there is a training process that I believe takes about six months to get them through. Corrections has an additional thirteen people, which we all know the struggles we'd had in corrections in prior years. Thirteen is a great number. There's still a few positions to fill, but we'll need to keep in mind that when they finish their new facility, they'll need an additional thirty people. Shawnee County currently has fifty-five vacancies in ten different departments. And I just want to make sure that you and the public know, we see a lot happening at the federal level and even the state and local level with freezing positions or offering people buyouts to leave positions. That is not the position we're in here in Shawnee County. We've done a good job of vetting departments and making sure that the positions they have are really needed positions. Parks and Rec has thirty-one openings. They are intermittent and seasonal. They include the golf courses, sports, pools and aquatics, summer camps, concessions and amenities, community centers, Old Prairie Town, Great Overland Station, the campgrounds, and park maintenance positions. The Health Department has eight openings, maintenance technician and courier, office assistant, too, RNs in both full-time and part-time positions, as well as a social worker. And these are positions that we have struggled to fill for quite some time. Public Works has eight openings. We have a crew leader, a Public Works mechanic, road maintenance one, a road maintenance trainee position, and that includes our new CDL program, which they're doing very well with that program. And I believe they have three people in CDL training now. We have intermittent summer public works crew and intermittent public works labors that we'll be hiring as well. The Department of Corrections has three openings, corrections specialist on both the adult and juvenile side, as well as a custodian position. The Treasurer's Office has two positions with the account clerk two and an accountant one. The following departments all have one position open currently. That's an HR specialist one in human resources, a chief network engineer in information technology, and the register of deeds office has an electronic archiving specialist. The Sheriff's Office has a deputy position open, and Solid Waste has a truck driver position open. There's also a testament here for Solid Waste. There was a time where we couldn't find Solid Waste drivers or our carriers on the back, and we are now at a position where we have those full. Shawnee County does offer a hiring bonus of one thousand five hundred dollars on some of the open positions. They include the corrections specialist at the Department of Corrections, the registered nurse at the nurse positions at the Health Department, the crew leader, mechanic, and road maintenance positions at Public Works. All of our positions are posted online at www.snco.gov. Please have the public apply if you know anyone who's looking for work. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have over our hiring and open positions.
Questions?
Just doing a great job filling those positions.
It's our departments doing a great job filling those positions. And IT is working with us now to upgrade what you see on Oasis. So even that's going to get better and simpler for the departments very soon. I would, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, in dispatch with us getting, I know there's still training, and the training takes quite a while, but are we going to be phasing out the program where we had people coming in to work and help fill in at dispatch?
Eventually, we'd have to, as people get trained up. I know they're paying quite a bit of money for that each month, but I would have to let the sheriff address that
Okay.
about exactly when that would happen.
All right.
Yeah, I think this is, this is all really good news. I know it was just a couple years ago, we were closing pools intermittently to kind of move the staff around to make sure we had enough lifeguards to keep those open. Hopefully, we don't have those problems anymore. It seems like things are, are looking up there. The 911 center, I think, that's fantastic that we're getting those people hired on and trained, because nobody wants to call 911 and not have somebody answer. And then also the jail, I mean, we were down, I don't know, do you have any idea what the maximum that we were down at one point?
Think what you said, about ninety people that we were down. And here we are with three positions to fill.
Yeah, that's fantastic. So, I mean, not only for, you know, the inmates to, to have proper supervision, but it's, it's important for the safety of the folks that are working there, their families, because they'd love to have days off every once in a while. And, you know, when you're understaffed that much, it's a lot of overtime that people are having to work. So I think it's good for, for us from a budgetary standpoint as well. And so I think it's all very good stuff. So I appreciate the update.
Good deal. I would be remiss if I didn't mention our benefits when we talk about HR and updates. We did implement a new prescription drug plan, which is scheduled to save us quite a bit of money. Our insurance plan is in good shape. We are above our thresholds there, and I believe we have approximately six million. And that's without doing end-of-year. But we will have to keep in mind that we probably will have to raise rates on benefits this coming year, just depending on how much we're able to save. And we wouldn't realize that money really until 2027. We've gone, I believe it's four, almost five years now, without an increase in benefits. So that is something that we'll need to keep in mind.
Yeah, going, the last four to five years with the way that inflation's been, it's kind of remarkable to not have had an increase in our health insurance premiums. So again, good job there.
Concur completely.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. The next item is public comment. I did not have anybody signed up. We do have administrative communications on here. Is there anyone wishing to make any administrative communications today? Commissioner Cook?
No, not this morning.
Okay, nothing for me either. We don't have a need for executive session either, so we are adjourned.